We are calling this meeting to order, so welcome everyone, welcome trustees. It is such an honor and such a pleasure to be back with you after being gone for two months. And you know, thank God that I'm here with you and really, thank you very much. And thank you, really praise to God for having me here after two months and really to be here is such a miracle. And to see the amazing work that goes on in our colleges, so I feel very blessed to be here with my colleagues and to be here with you this evening. It's the first time that I'm actually out in public and so I am coming back to public with you for the very first time. And so, oh. You're gonna make me cry, but you're very special, so you are the first ones as I come back into world and into coming back to business. So it's a wonderful opportunity for me as I transition back. So we do have trustees 1.1, we see that we have our ground rules. So you have those that we can reference to the ground rules as we continue to have our meeting. We also have our board vision and with this we move on to 1.2, which is Chancellor's recommendation of the agenda.
Recommended as presented.
Thank you. And so 1.3 trustees, is there any items that you would like to get pulled from the consent items? Okay.
Just have a, I think we have a practice of not pulling it, but making a comment. So I guess before we vote, there's a comment.
Okay, so we were going to just, since we have it agendaized, call for it and then right before the consent items, we'll hear public comments. And then at the consent calendar section, we'll go ahead and ask if there's any trustees who want to pull any items after we've heard some comments.
So point of clarification, just so I understand, so you have an item that you'd like to comment on that's part of the consent calendar. I'm just wondering, should we pull it now so that, you know, before we get there, just?
No, there's someone that's retiring that was my professor, I just wanted to say, congrats, that was it, so.
Okay. Tracy Pacheski, 11.2, okay. Okay, so I have Tracy Pacheski, 11.2 being pulled, okay. So if there's additional items being pulled, we move on to 2.1. And I'm going to ask trustee chancellor to please lead us, pledge to the flag.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we now move to our public comments. We have Teresa Bonham followed by Mariurenda. Teresa, can you give us a moment? Thank you.
I'm not sure your microphone is. Am I working? All right, thank you. Good evening, I'm Teresa Bonham, president, AFT Local 1828. We've never been closer to reaching an agreement on the compressed calendar as we are now. However, we are still in the same place, stuck in mediation for months with no agreement reached. Although many faculty want a compressed calendar, they do not want the one outlined in the district's proposal from this past spring before we declared impasse. AFT will continue to be creative and collaborative as we have demonstrated since the negotiation process began. We are in mediation because we have a few issues that we have not been able to agree upon. Here are the three faculty priorities that have not changed since negotiation began. One, faculty want the details of assignments. For example, faculty want to know how a full-time 1.0 FTE is assigned in a compressed calendar. Faculty want to know how the 1,400 hours will be accounted for in the academic year. Two, faculty want compensation for excessive teaching hours. We are well aware that faculty will work more hours in a day and in a week in a compressed calendar than they do in a traditional calendar. But faculty are concerned about those who will be forced to work excessive instructional hours. Those faculty need to be compensated each semester or intercession where they will be required to teach excess instructional hours. Three, faculty want protections and guardrails should a scheduling mistake take place. AFT 1828 cannot agree to a proposal without these faculty priorities and the union is prepared to go to fact finding if we need to. According to our most recent survey, 73% of faculty are behind us. But what will fact finding lead to? Will it lead us to a conclusion? Or will both sides be in the same place? If yes, then let's settle this. If no, maybe now is not the right time. Maybe in two years when we have an opportunity to see how the standardized attendance accounting method will impact faculty schedules and faculty work hours in a compressed calendars. Can we revisit this topic? We have a major CBA negotiation that is on hold until we settle these negotiations. And the AFT team is ready to begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Teresa. Maria Follow Pequeña Galdámez Ramirez.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor McLennan. Maria Uranda, SEIU Chief Stuart, on behalf of the Classified Unit commenting on Agenda Item 15.3, SEIU Report. We have met with management's team three times since the last board meeting. We continue to make progress on certain non-monetary articles and have reached some tentative agreements. We will be ready to engage management on fiscal articles soon. Our next scheduled date is on the 24th of this month. We also wanted to provide the board with an update on the two permanent classified employees that were laid off due to grant funding or lack thereof at the October board meeting. We are happy to report that both members have secured other jobs within the district. This was made possible by VCHR Barroso, Director Banuelos, in their roles in HR, following process and procedures for layoffs and working diligently to make our members whole. We appreciate their time and efforts, as do the employees impacted. Lastly, SEIU wanted to support the Classified Senate's, their process for communicating, providing feedback and the reporting out that they do on behalf of their senate members. Many of these members are represented by SEIU Local 99. And we want to ensure that their voices are free from any retaliatory actions. SEIU reaffirms that we represent all unit members regardless of their political ideologies, religious beliefs, backgrounds, opinions, or statements. Our members' rights to express their thoughts and voices include both the ability to dissent and to agree. We welcome all voices, it is what makes us a union after all. And we will protect our members' rights to engage in these discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Kenya followed by Natalie Valdivia.
Good evening Chancellor and trustees. At the previous month's Board of Trustees meeting, a small group of us from Ventura College respectfully requested administrative stability at our institution. We regret that the form provided in response did not directly address our specific concerns, needing our return today to clearly articulate our position. We are advocating for systematic improvement and kindly requesting that the board diversify sources of information and exercise caution regarding potentially distracting data. Ask critical questions concerning the high turnover of leadership and counselors within certain departments. The situation surpasses mere leadership changes, it involves a fundamental and serious misuse of valuable time, resources, and finances. To address this crisis objectively, our formal request is for an independent external investigator or organizational psychologist to assess the environment at Ventura College. The goal of this assessment will be to recommend systemic improvement that supports the well-being of both our employees and our students. While there may be not a specific form that condemns bullying, our district values clearly articulate a commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion. Where all individuals are respected, a culture built on the highest standards of trust, integrity, and honesty. And emphasize well-being, support, and development by valuing and supporting individuals' holistic well-being. As the hiring process for an Ventura College begins, we appreciate the recent survey linked sent to us for input. However, we believe it is crucial to address the common challenges faced by our past presidents during their tenure at VC and our many former VPs and deans. We must prevent further abrupt departures or sudden early retirements stemming from a hostile environment. We urge an investigation into the common reasons these individuals left so that we can identify and remove those barriers. The group who spoke last month received a significant pouring of support following our public comments. Many of our colleagues relate to our concerns but remain conflicted between their desire to speak up and their fear of doing so. A fear we have externalized many times to the chancellor and now to this board. On this Global Kindness Day, we ask one more time, please listen to us. We urge you to take the kind and necessary actions to stop anything that opposes our stated values as a district and as a college. Let us focus on collective efforts that is all positive versus true, honorable, just, pure, lovely, commendable, and excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenya. Natalie Valdivia followed by Scott Brewer.
Good evening esteemed faculty, staff, guests, does that work? Good evening esteemed faculty, staff, guests, and members of the Board of Trustees. First, I'd like to introduce myself, my name is Natalie Valdivia and I'm proud to currently serve as Oxnard College's Associate Student Government Secretary. And I'm going to be talking about the adjournment of the last Board of Trustees meeting on October 14, 2025, along with when the resolutions passed. As a student government representative, I wanted to not only share my voice, but to be the voice of those who wish their voice could be heard. Oxnard College, along with Ventura and Moore Park College, all have students of various diverse backgrounds, personalities, cultures, and identities, with various student communities often lacking representation. With that being said, I'm not here to bash anyone regarding the various subjects that concern our students. But rather remind the Board of Trustees what our collective student values are. Oxnard, Ventura, and Moore Park College should serve as safe space for each and every student. At times, those campuses may be the only place where students feel that they have a safe space. However, I know that each and every student has a very powerful voice. We favor equitable representation of all kinds of identities and backgrounds of students. We stand to uplift one another as we as students have bowed so many unspoken battles. Students of all kinds are able to spread so much positivity despite our current social climate happening in our communities. The addition of Italian-Polish heritage being recognized as part of Ventura Community College District is not and was never inherently wrong decision. But rather the addition of this representation while not acknowledging what makes up more than 70% of both Oxnard and Ventura College students, our Latinx community. I want to remind the Board of Trustees that September 15 through October 15 each year's Latinx/Hispanic Heritage Month. Not acknowledging the community of students who are so present in their county yet still so underrepresented in our nation does not uphold our student values. Additionally, adjourning the last Board of Trustees meeting in honor of a figure who was against all these values that we as this community uphold doesn't damage the Board of Trustees, but rather the students. It sets us back to values where students were misrepresented, where women in higher education weren't seen as valid or as capable as men. Where people of color weren't seen as, were seen as less to those who aren't. Where the LGBTQIA+ community were told that marriage is only between the man and the woman. There are so many more communities of not just students, but humans who deserve to be treated as such. Our values would have been much more accurately represented if that meeting was adjourned in honor of those who lost their lives that same day to the Evergreen Heights shooting. I want to end this with a quote by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. Please listen to our students more time with more reinforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Scott Brewer followed by Ariana Villalobos Castillo.
Good evening, my name is Scott Brewer, counseling faculty at Ventura College. I'm here tonight to read a statement on behalf of my colleague, Colleen Coffey, full-time faculty member and history department chair at Ventura College. She is unable to be here tonight, but she asked that her voice be included in this conversation. These are her words. Dear members of the board, I wrote to Chancellor McLennan and Dr. Putman right after Dr. Laredo Habib was forced out. And she was forced out, we all know that. I appealed to them to do something about the toxic culture of bullies running the table at VC. And now I'm appealing to all of you with the same message, you have to do something. Hire your own independent investigator or obtain the services of the Public Employment Relation Board's Workplace Conflict Resolution Program. Whatever you believe is the appropriate next step, but please do something. Since my brave colleagues spoke up at your last meeting, I have already heard the rumor mill churning on campus claiming that we are a bunch of whiners. That we are making this up, that the data shows that VC's presidents last the same average time as any others. This is all noise meant to distract and discredit those of us who are finally speaking up. Start at Student Services where the turmoil and turnover has been most obvious for the past decade. Look at the exit interviews of the many individuals who've come and gone from VC. Listen to our staff professionals, ask faculty how committees run and how decisions get made. You will never solve Ventura College's leadership problems until you deal with the root of the problem, the bullies. And now you have a public record of employees pleading with you to investigate and to act. If you continue to do nothing, the public record is discoverable. I love my job at VC and I am surrounded by wonderful colleagues and friends, but a few bad apples are spoiling the bunch. Enough already, please help us. Thank you for your time. Those were the words of Professor Colleen Coffey. I'd like to close with just a brief, brief personal statement, thank you for listening. We, your faculty and your staff have spoken clearly, the next step is action and we sincerely hope that you will take it.
Thank you, Scott. Ariana Villalobos Castillo followed by Sebastian DeClerc.
Hi, I believe I put for my public comment to be at the Agenda Item 20?
You're right, you're right, so you can speak at that time, absolutely, thank you, Ariana.
Good evening, members of the board, chancellor, colleagues, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to add my voice to those of all my colleagues here tonight to address the ongoing problem of staff-on-staff bullying and intimidation. That harm that is doing to both our employees and our students and how deeply it affects our community and our working conditions. Many of us have seen and experienced behaviors that undermine professionalism, isolate employees, and punish those who try to uphold integrity in their work. What is most troubling is the perception and at times the reality that some individuals are protected because of their personal or professional connections to the district office and human resources. While others are left unprotected and vulnerable. That imbalance erodes trust, morale, and the ability of our college to live up to its stated values of equity and respect. At a recent campus meeting with faculty and staff, the chancellor acknowledged that the campus itself must take responsibility for repairing its culture. That is an important step. But I want to respectfully remind this board and our district administration that the responsibility does not stop there. The district and the board have a duty to ensure that every campus under your governance is a safe, fair, and ethical workplace. You set the tone for accountability and you have the power that investigation, to make sure that investigations are impartial, that retaliation is not tolerated. And that leadership behaviors are held to the same standard as everyone else. When in response to a question from the chancellor, half of the room of tenured employees raised their hands to say that they did not feel safe to speak up. That should have been a moment of reckoning. That level of fear among long-serving, committed employees is not a sign of isolated incidents, it's evidence of a culture in distress. I understand that it can be tempting to deny or minimize the problem to hope that things will quiet down. But the number of people who are speaking out now publicly, at personal and professional risk, is itself a testimony to the depth of the issue. And to our collective expectation that district leadership and this board will take meaningful action. I urge you please not to respond with defensiveness, but with courage. Commission an independent review of workplace culture. Create confidential reporting pathways that bypass local power structures. Hold people accountable for how they treat people, not just for how they perform on paper. Our college cannot thrive when fear governs its employees. We need your leadership to ensure that integrity, respect, and safety are not just words in a policy, but lived realities for everyone who works at Ventura College. Thank you for listening and for taking action.
Thank you, Sebastian. We have now Eric Martenson followed by Ryan Pettifills.
Good evening, I'm Eric Martenson and I teach English and chair the Language Arts Department at Ventura College. I want to speak plainly, bullying is a real and pervasive problem at Ventura College. Our counseling colleagues described it here at the last board meeting and our former president named the same dynamic from her own experience. These concerns are not isolated to one division or one leadership role. Faculty, classified professionals, and administrators have all felt the impact. A colleague put it plainly, bullying is top-down and sideways as much as it is down-up. I've seen this in meetings, committees, and even in email communications, people being dismissed, talked over, or shut down. Even when these issues become formal complaints, the pattern is that HR advises faculty simply to avoid the bully. That's not a real solution. We know from research like Google's Project Aristotle that psychological safety is essential for high-performing teams. Without it, people hold back and our students suffer because we can't give them our best. That's why I support an independent review of Ventura College's culture. We need outside help to build better systems, mediation, ombuds support, clear norms for committee conduct. I also want to express my strong support for our current president, Dr. Luca Lewis. I believe he can lead the campus in rebuilding a healthier, more respectful culture, especially in our committee work. The spaces where our values are enacted and where many of these problems emerge. With structure, guidance, and board support, he can help us make the changes our community needs. I urge the board to take this seriously, this is real and campus-wide. Our students deserve a college where everyone working here feels safe and respected. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. After Ryan, we'll have Erin Marquez-Lali.
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Ryan Pettifills and I'm a member of the Math Department at Ventura College. I want to begin by saying how deeply I care about this district, Ventura College, our students, and our mission. I'm proud to have some of the highest success rates in my discipline. And I only mention that because I am so committed to my students and the reputation that we have as a college and district. For years, Ventura College has faced persistent instability in leadership caused not by a lack of qualified applicants. But by undermining behavior, bullying, and personal attacks that has repeatedly driven presidents, vice presidents, and deans and faculty out of their positions. This environment makes it almost impossible for leaders to succeed and creates ripple effects that affects the entire college. Over the past decade, this ongoing instability has weakened morale, slowed progress, and made it harder for staff to serve our students effectively. I have known several dedicated colleagues who chose to leave because of this challenging atmosphere. Their departures have further strained our resources and disrupted continuity, ultimately impacting the students that we serve here. The consequences are not abstract, they touch every corner of our college community. Students experience the effects of this instability directly, services can be inconsistent, programs delayed, opportunities for success disrupted. The college's reputation suffers, but within, both within the district and in the broader community. As leadership changes prevent us from building the consistency and trust we need necessary to survive. To thrive and survive. Each leadership change also carries a financial and operational cost. Searches, onboarding, transitions, often reaching hundreds of thousands of dollars. Money that should go directly to programs, resources, and support for students. Instead spent mitigating disruption caused by instability. But the human cost, the erosion of trust, morale, and sense of community is far greater. To restore trust and accountability, the district should immediately commission a competent, truly independent investigation firm to examine leadership turnover and any systemic issues. This investigation must be transparent in its process, maintain full transparency with faculty and staff, and ensure that the results are communicated in a transparent and thorough manner.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Erin followed by Jeff Chung.
MLK was awful, he's not a good person. Religious freedom should be terminated. Most people are scared when they see a black pilot. Multiple black politicians stole white people's spots. Women's natural place is under their husbands' control. George Floyd had it coming, the January 6 protesters didn't. Gay people should be stoned to death. The 1964 Civil Rights Act was a huge mistake. Transgender people are an abomination to God. I believe marriage is between one man and one woman. We must ban trans-affirming care in the entire country. And lastly, it's worth to have a cost of unfortunately, some gun deaths every single year so that we can have the Second Amendment. I was already asleep more than halfway across the country at a conference when Vice Chair Lou Lictell spoke in honor of Charlie Kirk, the person who uttered the above statements. I'd chosen to miss the last couple of board meetings since I was studying some of the very things Kirk stood against. LGBTQIA+ rights, history, art, writers, curriculum, and the amazing other colorful bits and pieces of queer culture. While I'm on my year-long sabbatical from Oxnard College. Hello, my name is Erin Marquez-Lali and I teach health and kinesiology at Oxnard College. My pronouns are she and her. I hate having to say this because it should go without saying, but I by no means wish any harm to anyone who disagrees with me. Kirk and I disagreed on numerous things, but I don't condone his or anyone's murder because of a political or otherwise disagreement or stance. We should, like you said trustee Lictell, be able to have open discourse and free exchange of ideas as essential components of our constitutional federal republic. But honoring someone like Kirk behind the facade that he was a positive influence in the area of nonpartisan inclusive engagement couldn't be further from the truth. Perhaps pacifists like Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Mahatma Gandhi, Joan Baez, or Frederick Douglass would be better people to admire for their free speech contributions. Next time you think it's appropriate to inflict your personal opinions onto your constituents, the VCCCD employees and its students, I ask you to please, please, think a little deeper about what your words. think a little deeper about what your words mean and the hypocrisy that it shows. Unless, of course, that's the look you're going for ahead of a reelection attempt. Thank you.
Jeff Jung, followed by Estelle Tionquin.
Hello, my name is Jeff Jung. I'm a student at Moore Park College, and I'm also a delegate for ASMC. I just wanted to say thank you for having me and listening to me. The Ventura County Community College District is one of the highest-achieving school districts in the state of California. Colleges from around the state look at our school district as an example because we are leaders. The great level of education is largely due to the structure of the school board. Our shared learning environment depends on integrity of our leaders within the school board. Divisiveness and pettiness is not a part of our character. Students thrive when they are given a politically neutral environment. Students need the support of a stable culture to focus and strive for academic goals. It is an upset to the order when someone pushes the party line of chaos and instability. As an employee of the state, Mr. Pyokowski is bound to the duty of being a civil servant. Intimidation and seeking personal power and status does not align with acting with civility. Behavior like this works contrary to the public good and hurts the academic community. Looking into emails of colleagues is a blatant abuse of power and is unwelcome in an academic setting. It infringes on the rights of people to go to work without having to worry about threats or intimidation. There are proper ways to seek change from any board member, but they are only through proper channels. There is a whole guidebook of rules on what is acceptable behavior. AP 2715, Section B, is one of these guiding rules that keeps board members behaving in the way that Mr. Pyokowski has been. These rules are the reason why we have been able to establish such a great academic institution in the first place. Change does not come from the divisiveness and sowing discord. An environment of instability is a goal of Mr. Pyokowski. It is not my wishes for the violations of the procedure to continue.
Thank you, Jeff. Estelle.
Good evening, Chancellor and Board of Trustees. My name is Estelle Tiongson, and I am a student, as well as a board member, of the Associate Students of Moore Park College. However, today I only speak on behalf of myself as a student. It has come to my attention about the concerning actions from the leadership among the Board of Trustees, and these actions can only be described as nothing short of selfishness. These actions that are concerning have been against the policies set in place by the Ventura County Community College District, and in doing so, this has risked the accreditation of the entire college district. This risk is unfair and a severe injustice to the thousands of students that attend any of the three campuses of Moore Park College, Oxnard College, and Ventura College. I am here to wholly condemn these actions. It is beyond shameful to disregard the education of countless students for one's own personal agenda. In our current climate, higher education has become more unaffordable and inaccessible. Yet, community college has been the vital bridge to this rising inaccessibility. These campuses are places that serve all walks of life. From students who just graduated high school and choose community college as their first choice when pursuing college, to the students who are parents who have been empowered to return to higher education because community college has given them the opportunity. Among these colleges, many of these students are the first in their family to attend any sort of college, and others only have themselves to rely on for support. These are the students who will be failed by letting these selfish actions seep through and taint the hard work that has gone into building this district. I urge the Board of Trustees to place their students first and prioritize their livelihoods. The trust and futures of these students must be honored. Thank you.
Thank you, Estelle. Thank you for the public comments. We now move to 3.01, which is acknowledgment of our new employees. We are always so happy to be able to receive more employees to our family within the Ventura County Community College District, and so I know they will be recognized through the different reports that will be coming our way from the Academic and Classified Senate as well. We move on to 3.02, recognition of our retirees. And so we're always so grateful for all of our retirees who have been throughout the years so faithful to the mission and the values of who we are as Ventura County Community College District. So we thank them for their service to our students and for our entire community. And I'm also sure they're going to be recognized during the reports that we'll be hearing from both Academic and Classified Senates. There are no acknowledgements or guests in this evening for 3.3, so now we move to consultations. And so we begin with Classified Senates presenting a consultation, and we start with, I believe, is it Ventura College?
Evening, Chancellor McLennan, members of the board, student trustees, and guests. My name is Tatiana, and I serve as the Classified Senate Vice President at Ventura College. This evening, I'll be providing a consultation on the following items. 1.1, 2020 VCCD ground rules and 2022 board vision. In consultation to 1.1 ground rules and board vision and in support of 5.5 Academic Senate reports, I would like to read a statement that was discussed and approved by the Ventura College Classified Senate. The Ventura College Classified Senate, representing all classified professionals at our college, stands unified and reaffirming our commitment to the values that define our district: respect, integrity, inclusion, collaboration, and service. These principles guide how we treat one another and how we serve our students and community every day. At the October 14, 2025 Board of Trustees meeting, the decision to adjourn in honor of a polarizing political commentator prompted deep concern. Regardless of intent, this action introduced partisanship into a space that must remain grounded in education equity and public trust. The individual honored has expressed views that many in our district, including LGBTQ+ individuals, immigrants, and others from marginalized communities, experience as demeaning or exclusionary. Recognizing such a figure in the district's name risks signaling endorsement of those messages. It erodes a sense of belonging that is central to our mission. As a senate, we remain committed to respect, compassion, and open dialogue even when perspectives differ. Our concern is not ideological but institutional. Public institutions must remain inclusive, transparent, and nonpartisan to maintain the confidence of the diverse communities we serve. To that end, we believe there must be clear, shared expectations for how actions taken in the district's name are made and communicated so they reflect collective values rather than individual discretion. In that spirit, what steps will the board take to ensure that future actions and statements made reflect our district's shared values, follow transparent practices, and uphold the nonpartisan trust essential to public education? Our students, colleagues, and community are watching. Let us show them that respect, inclusion, and integrity are more than just words. They are the foundation of every decision we make together. Thank you.
Thank you. Oxnard College.
Good evening, Chancellor, Board of Trustees, and guests. I'm Berenice Rodriguez, the Classified Senate President. Consultation with 3.1, the acknowledgment of new employees. I'd like to welcome Jaclyn Johnson, the new Dean of Public Safety, Athletics, Health, and Kinesiology. In recognition of the VCCD retirees, Oxnard College is losing three amazing women that have been pillars to not only their departments but our college as a whole. Deborah Tyson, the Assistant Register and Classified Senate Treasurer, has been with us for 27 years. Connie Campos, Administrative Assistant for the Dean of Liberal Arts, has been with us for 25 years. And Carla Banks, the Executive Assistant to the President, has been with us for 26 years. I've personally had the pleasure of working with these ladies in the 11 years I've been at Oxnard College and can truly say that they will be missed and will be leaving big shoes to fill. 11.1, content calendar, human resources. One more congratulations to Sheila Lu on her new role as Senior Accountant Technician at the district. OC's loss is now DAC's gain. In the establishment of a Program Coordinator One at Oxnard College, I would like to express our full support for the establishment of the position. This classified role is vital to ensuring the program's continued success in providing support to first-generation, low-income, and underrepresented students. In 16.1.2, the Oxnard College's Student Equity Report, I would like to highlight the report and thank everyone who worked hard to ensure its completion and approval. And lastly, I would like to circle back and provide consultation in relation to 1.1, 2020 VCCD ground rules and 2022 board vision, as well as 5.5's Academic Senate's joint statement. My final statement is on behalf of Oxnard College's classified professionals. So looking through the mission, vision, and guiding principles of Oxnard College, the common themes are equity, inclusion, and student center, community empowerment. We acknowledge the historical context of exclusion in higher education, and we are advocates for a just and inclusive society while valuing the rich backgrounds and lived experiences of the students we serve. The district-wide values include equity, diversity, inclusion, trust, integrity, honesty, support, community, and belonging. The district's vision is to elevate community hope and opportunity, one student at a time, and its mission includes a promise of equitable access and empowerment for all students. With this being said, we would like to respectfully address the decision to close our last Board of Trustees meeting in memory of a highly partisan public figure. While we recognize that individuals may hold differing personal beliefs, publicly honoring someone associated with divisive activism created discomfort and concern among students and staff. Actions of that nature can appear politically biased and risk undermining our shared commitment to inclusion and neutrality. As a public institution that serves a richly diverse student body, many of whom come from communities that have often been the subject of exclusionary or critical rhetoric, it is essential that our actions reflect neutrality, inclusivity, and respect for all. In addition, according to ACCJC's roles and responsibilities for governing boards, the board gives direction and guidance to the CEO and staff of the institution. A high-functioning board maintains a good relationship with the CEO. The board empowers the CEO to oversee the operations of the institution and avoids intruding in those operations. The board's primary responsibility is policy-level leadership and oversight, not involvement of day-to-day operations. For this reason, it is not within the purview of an individual trustee or the board collectively to call for the termination of any college personnel. Doing so exceeds the scope of board authority and undermines the structure that ensures transparency, fairness, and trust within our district. We respectfully ask that the board establish a formal procedure for submitting and approving resolutions, adjournments in memory of, or similar public recognitions. Having a transparent process will help ensure that all such actions align with the mission, vision, and values of the district: equity, diversity, inclusion, integrity, and respect for all. We also encourage the board to consider developing a mechanism of accountability when actions fall outside the scope of trustee responsibilities or encroach on college operations. Continued actions beyond the scope of the board's authority could jeopardize our accreditation as they contradict the governance and delegation standards outlined by ACCJC. Also, without such processes, actions taken by individual trustees may appear to represent the views of the entire board. Finally, we want to affirm that we stand as a united front with our classified colleagues across VCCCD, guided by the same principles of respect, collaboration, and commitment to the communities we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Moore Park College.
Thank you. Good evening, all. My name is Kristen Robinson, and I am representing the Moore Park College Classified Senate. For consultation on 3.1, acknowledgment of new employees, congratulations and welcome to all promoted new employees in the district. I would especially like to acknowledge Moore Park College Child Development Assistant, Tiana Ramirez Martinez. Tiana's journey with our campus began when she was studying early childhood education and leading the Child Development Club. It's been great to see her ascend from student to provisional staff to permanent staff with our CDC. For 3.2, recognition of Ventura County Community College District retirees, congratulations to our three colleagues at Oxnard College for their impending retirements. For 16.1.1, Moore Park College Student Equity Report, I'd like to acknowledge the work done by Moore Park College faculty, staff, administrators, and students in authoring or reviewing the Moore Park College 25 to 28 Student Equity Achievement Plan. The plan's goals around increased enrollment, improved course completion, heightened persistence, and enhanced transfer success among disproportionately impacted groups are informed by student data, and we anticipate stakeholders from across the campus contributing to the attainment of said priorities. We thank the C Committee Work Group for engaging the Moore Park College Classified Senate as well as other governance groups in the plan's review. They did a great job. And finally, circling back to item 1.1, I do have consultation on behalf of the Moore Park College Classified Senate Executive Team regarding the vice chair's decision to end the October 14, 2025 meeting with a remembrance of Charlie Kirk, which he did under the pretext of promoting open discourse and the free exchange of ideas. The vice chair went on to affirm VCCD's commitment to engage in a, quote, "nonpartisan-inclusive manner." However, it seems counterintuitive to call for nonpartisan and inclusive engagement among stakeholder groups while also elevating a figure that many would describe as divisive, racist, xenophobic, and extreme. Charlie Kirk was also very partisan, and choosing to honor him in this manner raises concerns for our Classified Senate Executive Team about our board member's ability, our Board of Trustees' ability to be impartial and base future decisions on available facts and the best interests of the entire district and its students and not on personal biases. As our trustees, we ask you to continue to serve the interests of our communities and colleges, not individual political interests, and that you remain focused on your primary roles of setting policies, overseeing budgets, and ensuring that our colleges fulfill their respective educational missions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, District Administratives.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor McLennan, Student Trustee Iyash, and members of the public. Is it on? Okay. My name is Diana Martin, and I serve as the Classified Senate President for the District Administrative Center. In consultation of item 1.1, 2020 VCCD ground rules and 2022 board vision, on behalf of the District Administrative Center Classified Senate, I want to reaffirm our resolute commitment to the values that unite the Ventura County Community College District, particularly equity, diversity, inclusion, trust, integrity, honesty, well-being, support, development, collaboration, community, and belonging. At our last meeting, the decision to adjourn in memory of political commentator Charlie Kirk was deeply concerning. Meetings have traditionally been adjourned in recognition of individuals who have served and inspired our community directly. This act introduced partisanship into a space that must remain grounded in impartiality, respect, education, and public service. More importantly, it honored an individual whose public statements and actions have targeted communities our district has pledged to serve: students and employees from diverse backgrounds, LGBTQIA+ individuals, immigrants, and other marginalized people who deserve safety, dignity, and opportunity. That moment did not reflect who we are or what this district stands for. Our vision to elevate community hope and opportunity, one student at a time, cannot coexist with rhetoric or symbolism that denigrates members of our community. District employees, administrators, and trustees all carry a responsibility to model leadership in service of the public's interest. Our senate believes in working collaboratively and respectfully with leadership, faculty, and students. We can disagree on policy and perspective, but we cannot compromise on integrity, inclusion, or the obligation to create belonging for every person in our colleges and workspaces. We ask that the board, as representatives of our district and our community, hold themselves to the same standards of trust, integrity, and respect that we expect of each other. Our students and colleagues are watching. They deserve to see leadership that reflects our shared values in both work and action. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Academic Senate, Ventura College.
Thank you, Chair Torres, trustees, student trustee Iyash, and Chancellor McLennan. This is a joint statement from Moore Park College Academic Senate, Oxnard College Academic Senate, and Ventura College Academic Senate, consulting on item 1.1, the 2020 VCCD ground rules and 2022 board vision. VCCD employees are aware that an individual trustee submitted a public records request for copies of at least 12 employees' emails. An individual trustee asked the district staff to research employees' emails to find any emails. that contain certain political keywords he alone chose. This was not a Board of Trustees' action, but the action of an individual trustee. When the Academic Senate councils of Moore Park College, Oxnard College and Ventura College learned that one trustee decided to go outside their job description and submit this public records request, we were surprised. VCCCD employees also learned that an individual trustee called for the termination of an employee. Once again, a request for a termination of an employee is not the role of an individual trustee. It is an operational role of the district and colleges. There are multiple issues with these actions. One, public records can be requested by the public, but we have board policies outlining the higher requirements for members of the Board of Trustees. These actions, for example, checking employees' emails and calling for termination of employees are a violation of Board Policy twenty-two hundred, which states that the board develops policy and provides broad oversight for the district. The Board of Trustees delegates authority to the chancellor to implement its policies and perform the duties, uh, district duties and obligations. Two, AP twenty-seven fifteen B, Board Standards of Practice, which states that staff reports or requests for information requiring research will come from the board and not individual trustees. Three, these actions are a violation of BP twenty-four thirty-four. The board delegates full responsibility and authority to the chancellor to implement and administer board policies without board interference. The chancellor shall take direction from the trustees only when sitting in a duly held meeting of the board. No individual trustee shall give any direction or instructions to the chancellor. Neither the board nor any of its trustees shall give direction or instructions to any subordinate of the district chancellor. Behavior inconsistent with this policy would be considered a violation of BP twenty-seven fifteen Code of Ethics Standard of Practice. Four, we would like to remind the board about AP twenty-seven fifteen A. It states that all trustees are expected to maintain the highest standards of practice and ethical behavior, including maintain a public atmosphere where controversial issues can be debated openly, civilly and fairly. Protecting the, um, protecting the dignity of individuals and placing the good of the district above personal or political concerns. It is clearly stated that the board is to place the good of the district above personal or political concerns. When a trustee does not follow board policy and administrative procedure and acts as an individual and not a part of the board as a whole, we do not meet accreditation standards. We are worried that these actions will put our accreditation at risk.
Thank you, Ventura College, Oxnard College. Yeah, okay. Moore Park College.
Thank you. Ruth Bennington, Vice President of Moore Park College Academic Senate. Not only do these actions violate policies, but they also change the tone and culture of our colleges. All three academic senates voted unanimously to, quote, "create a statement to communicate" that these actions create a perception of intimidation and a lack of collegiality. According to the book Encouraging Civility as a Community College Leader, edited by Paul Elsner and George Boggs, an institution's leadership sets the tone and creates the culture. The same book also highlights a two thousand workplace incivility study by the Keenan Flagler Graduate Business School at the University of North Carolina, which illustrates the impact of incivility on an institution's bottom line. Twenty-eight percent of student, excuse me, of study participants lost work time in trying to avoid the instigator of the uncivil behavior. Fifty-three percent lost work time worrying about the incident or what might happen next. Thirty-seven percent reported that they felt less committed to their organization. Forty-six percent thought about changing jobs to get away from the institution. And twelve percent changed jobs in order to avoid the instigator.
The Lord of Trustees, Oxnard College Academic Senate President. Continuing, as was acknowledged at the September Board of Trustees meeting, we are a peopled-centered organization. Faculty, classified professionals and administrators are at the foundation of student success. We would like our leaders to create a more civil and less intimidating tone so we can spend more time focusing on how we can better serve our students and our district-wide mission. For the sake of our accreditation and for the sake of our students, the colleges need the Board of Trustees not to act as individuals, but instead as a whole. The colleges need the Board of Trustees to follow board policy and administrative procedure and delegate operations to the district as required. And finally, the colleges need the Board of Trustees to follow AP twenty-seven fifteen B and place the good of the district above political concerns. All three academic senates voted unanimously to respectfully ask the Board of Trustees for a written acknowledgement that policy and procedure violations will not continue. So that concludes this statement. We would also like to direct your eyes to item five point five, the Academic Senate Reports, where this joint statement and its attachments can be viewed. Please note that the social media screenshots and emails referred to in this statement are attached in the written report and available under item five point five. So there are social media app next door screenshots from an individual trustee. So it starts with COT, Ventura College Employee. One of the statements I would like to read verbatim says, quote, "I need everyone who can to come to the Ventura County Community College Board Meeting on Tuesday, August twelfth, to call for, name redacted, not redacted on the social media post, and fellow Ventura College Classified Senate Board Members to be terminated," end quote. So that's actually five employees. Following that is a publicly posted district email with the employee's name, email address and several other email addresses. Following that are the public records requests from an individual trustee. Thank you.
Thank you for your statements. These concerns are going to be reviewed in accordance with Administrative Procedures twenty-seven fifteen. So we will be looking into this and with this, we are moving to our Associated Student Government, Oxnard College.
In alphabetical order, please.
Okay.
Hello, everybody. I'm the ASMC President for Moore Park College. We are going to be consulting on agenda items twelve point one, sixteen point one, sixteen point two, sixteen point three and eighteen point one. ASMC would like to provide consultation for agenda item twelve point one. ASMC values our student workers and would like for our district to be in compliance with minimum wage increase. Item sixteen point two for the MCC program, ASMC would like to stress the importance of all hard work and data collection and analysis that went into the creation of the plan. And ASMC got a glimpse of this months ago and we are very supportive of the work that has transpired over the months since. Item sixteen point two and sixteen point three for curriculum, in light of becoming educated individuals, Oxnard College and Moore Park College both have curriculum up for the vote, please approve. And for, um, lastly, agenda item eighteen point one, the Student Trustee Report. I first wanted to note that although there are some lovely ambitions that are featured on the Student Trustee Report, these goals are not unfolding on our campus at Moore Park College. And anything resembling these ideas are because of work done and incited by ASMC. We do not appreciate the student trustee who is largely absent writing on the coat sales of the work that me and my board have done. It only serves to trivialize the work that is done across our campuses. The student trustee has shown up to one meeting and has never sent us a report, not even once thus far. We have had little correspondence from the student trustee and what pinch of correspondence has occurred has been from the presidents of either OC or VC. The question remains, can you please elaborate on how you are increasing culturally relevant and dietary inclusive food options, advocating for faculty and staff LGBTQ plus competency trainings, increase availability on and off camp, on and off camp, off camp, on campus, sorry, counseling appointments and reduce wait times, which actually is not even a problem at our campus? How are these things taking place without the help of your constituents of the college that you preside over? I would ask that you please be a bit more honest with your reports because these leadership positions that we hold are very important and reach quite far into the lives of our students. Schools, everything to me as it is to the students that attend any one of the three colleges. Thank you.
Oxnard College.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Student Trustee Ayash, Chancellor McLennan and guests. I am Oxnard College Associate Student Government President, Adriana Villalobos Castillo. This is my consultation for the month of November. Item six point one, approval of minutes. A brief correction regarding the minutes, for the ASG reports, the document currently refers to CSUN Leadership Conference. This is inaccurate. The correct name is CCSAA Student Leadership Conference, which is a statewide community college conference not affiliated with CSUN. With those corrections noted, we support approval of the minutes. Item seven point three, acceptance of gifts. ASG supports the acceptance of gifts for this month. We want to extend our appreciation to the city of Oxnard Fire Department and Gilead on Turf for their contributions. Their continued support directly enhances the learning environment and resources available to students across the district and we are grateful for their commitment to our campuses. Item twelve point one, action to approve BP seventy-two seventy Student Workers Revised. For this eight item, ASG recommends we support approval. The revised policy updates student worker compensation to match California's upcoming minimum wage increase. This keeps the district in legal compliance and ensures equitable pay for our students, employees who rely on these campus jobs. Item six point one, C Program Student Equity Report. This item includes the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight Student Equity Plans for Moore Park, Oxnard and Ventura Colleges. At Oxnard College, the C team has actively collaborated with ASG, presented their findings and incorporated student feedback. The plan identifies equity gaps, provides data-driven analysis and outlines interventions that directly support disproportionate, disproportionately impacted student groups. ASG recommends we support approval because this plan is essential for funding, compliance and approval equitable outcomes for our students. Items sixteen point two and sixteen point three, Curriculum, ASG supports approval of both items. Item eighteen point one, Student Trustee Report, ASG seconds ASMC consultation. Item one point one and twenty, Ground Rules and Adjournment. ASG would like to note that we have formally adopted a resolution and request that the board take into consideration. Resolution calling for a transparent and equity-centered process for honorary adjournments, heritage resolutions and public recognition resolution. Whereas the Associated Student Government of Oxnard College represents a diverse student body that includes Latinx, Black, Indigenous, immigrant and LGBTQIS+ students, all committed to advancing equity, inclusion and community care. And in alignment with Oxnard College's mission and ASG's equity statement, affirms a shared commitment to centering student voice, ensuring fair representation and honoring the lived experience of all members of the campus community. And whereas, the Ventura County Community College District Board of Trustees periodically issues honorary adjournments and heritage recognitions to acknowledge individuals, groups and communities that have made a meaningful impact on the district, the community college system and broader society. A review of documented honorary adjournments from twenty nineteen onward indicates that the majority have recognized individuals who have served the VCCD community, the California Community College System, advocated against racism and acts of hatred, honored victims of school shootings and those who have served our local city and county communities. And whereas, recent actions including an honorary adjournment in honor of a national political figure and the approval of heritage recognitions for certain cultural groups have raised questions among students and community members regarding the transparency, consistency and inclusivity of the process by which honorees are selected and recognized that symbolic actions such as honorary adjournments and heritage recognitions play a vital role in communicating institutional values and communities priorities and thus benefit from clear, equitable and inclusive decision-making, decision-making processes. And whereas, students as key stakeholders in the overall educational community have the right to be well-informed about and participate in decisions that heavily influence campus culture and atmosphere as supported by California Education Code and the Student Nine Plus One Rights. Resolve that the Associated Student Government of Oxnard College respectfully calls upon the Ventura County Community College District Board of Trustees to develop and implement a transparent, equity-driven process for all honorary adjournments, heritage resolutions and public recognitions. And that this process include clear criteria, better opportunities for campus and student input and equitable presentation of the true diverse cultural and historical communities that comprise the VCCD student population and resolve that the board prioritize honoring historically underrepresented and disproportionately impacted communities, reflecting the values of inclusion, belonging and recognition central to the district's mission and resolve that students be directly engaged in shaping any symbolic or public acts taken by the board that may influence the campus atmosphere to ensure such actions reflect shared values and community consensus and resolve that copies of the resolution be distributed to the VCCD Board of Trustees, the Chancellor, all VCCD College Presidents, all Academic Senates, all Classified Senates and all VCCD Associated Student Governments and shared with the campus as a reaffirmation of students' commitment to constructive engagement, transparency and equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Oxnard College, Ventura College.
Hello, good evening, trustees, Student Trustee Ayash, Chancellor McLennan and guests. My name is Kyma Kelner and I serve as the Associated Students of Ventura College President. I'll be consulting tonight on just a few items, twelve point one, sixteen point one and eighteen point one. In regards to item twelve point one and sixteen point one, on behalf of the students of Ventura College, I recommend the approval for both of these items. And then just quickly, on item eighteen point one, I would like to second the concerns raised by Associate Students of Moore Park College President Eva on her concerns. And I would also just like to add some, some words that I'm in support of several of the goals listed on this report and they're very much worth pursuing. However, I would like to make a point of correction that they have not been reflected by the Student Trustee on the Ventura College campus, mainly just due to lack of any communication with a student trustee constituency, uh, student constituency groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Ventura College. With this, we will move on to reports and, um, the trustees have received your reports, but I'm going to go ahead and just if anybody wants to add something in addition to the reports, you'll be able to do so. And I have here listed the college Associated Student Governments. I don't know if in the last two months you're going first, you took, really you went to the end, but if you're ready, I can call on you now. Okay, um, so, Moore Park College.
Hello again, everyone. It has come to the attention of ASMC that individual trustee for the district of Ventura County submitted a public records request for copies of twelve employees' emails. The same individual trustee asked the district staff to conduct research of specific employees' emails to procure suspicious correspondence that may contain certain political keywords that he alone chose unsupported by the remaining trustees. Trustee representing area four decided to venture outside their job description as defined in following policy and administrative procedures BP two-two hundred and AP two-seven fifteen B. This deviation from policy is especially disappointing because trustee Pachowski, who made the records request, did not go through the appropriate channels or follow standard practice and procedure. Additionally, the same individual trustee called for the termination of an employee of Ventura County, Ventura College. Once again, a request for termination of an employee is not the role of an individual trustee. It is an operational role of the district and the colleges. Why weren't the appropriate channels navigated to rectify the situation that you felt was dire enough to request termination of twelve employees at VC? And why did you choose to post with accusatory and malicious language this issue on a community app? And I quote, "COT" in all caps, followed by several exclamation points. The rhetorical language is using fallacy to garner support from the public when this issue is not given the time or the care it deserves, which would be to run through the appropriate hands and policy first. To be frank and completely forward, there are too many questions that remain unanswered and wouldn't we want to know as much factual information as we could supply ourselves with before we request for termination of employees? And wouldn't you want your cohorts to be in support of the decision? I would imagine that if the remaining trustees came to this decision as a team and the board would be more, there would be more legitimacy and warrant. I, as a student of Moore Park College who holds a leadership position with my college, stand with Moore Park College and Oxnard College's senates when I echo for the sake of our accreditation and for the sake of our students, the colleges need the Board of Trustees to act not as individuals, but instead as a whole or a team. The Board of Trustees is comprised of several other individuals, not a single- The Board of Trustees is comprised of several other individuals, not a singular entity. As a student who values collaborative efforts, teamwork, and other perspectives, I do not support the trustee Pachowski's monarchical pushback on Ventura College. The colleges demand the Board of Trustees follow the board policy and administrative procedures as they are clearly defined. These policies and procedures have been scoured, scrutinized, and voted on to be enacted and carried out as written in their entirety. I'm asking for the sake of the college that I love, who has hired employees that I value and get continued support from my educational journey, that the Board of Trustees please delegate operations to the district as is required. And finally, the colleges demand the Board of Trustees to follow AP 2715B and place the good of the district above political and individual concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Moore Park College, Oxnard College.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Student Trustee Ayash, Chancellor McLennan, and guests. I am Oxnard College Associate Student Government President, Adriana Villalos Castillo. This is my report for the month of November. On behalf of the Oxnard College Associate Students and our student body, I want to express our deep concern and disappointment regarding trustee Litchell's decision to adjourn the last Board of Trustees meeting in memory of Charlie Kirk. Charlie Kirk is a highly controversial figure who has repeatedly used his platform to attack and demean the identities of many within our student community. Honoring such a person sends a harmful and exclusionary message to the very students this district is meant to serve. Additionally, at the same meeting, trustee Pachowski chose to recognize Polish and Italian Heritage Month, but did not acknowledge Hispanic Heritage Month, which also takes place in October. I want to remind the board that every college within this district is designated as a Hispanic-serving institution. The majority of students at Oxnard College are of Hispanic heritage. By overlooking this celebration, the board missed an opportunity to recognize and honor a large portion of our community. At Oxnard College, we take pride in uplifting and embracing all of our students. We make it a point to recognize diversity and ensure that everyone feels seen, valued, and supported. We ask that the board hold itself to the same standard. We have no objection to celebrating Polish or Italian Heritage Month. Cultural recognition is important, but the students you serve must always come first, not second. Thank you for your time and for listening to the voices of the students you represent.
Thank you, Oxnard College, Ventura College.
Hello again. Thank you to the trustees for reviewing the submitted report. So instead of highlighting bits of that tonight, I'll be using my time to vocalize a civility statement on behalf of the students of Ventura College. Starting by echoing the public comments made tonight and also statements made by my Ventura College colleagues, I urge you to truly listen to the community and the hurt that last month's adjournings statement has caused. We, the Associate Students of Ventura College, reaffirm our commitment to fostering environments rooted in equity, inclusion, and mutual respect. Our student body reflects a wide range of identities, beliefs, and lived experiences. And it is our responsibility as student leaders to ensure that every student feels supported, valued, and represented. Because of this diversity, it is essential that our district and this board uphold the standard of nonpartisanship and remain focused on serving all students equitably. As the elected representative of Ventura College students, my role is to uplift their needs, strengthen their educational experience, and center my role on serving all students, which by default would exclude making any statements or symbolic gestures that do not reflect that. Our campuses must remain spaces where students from all backgrounds can learn, grow, and lead without fear of political bias or exclusion. While we respect the right of individuals to hold personal beliefs, and we believe it is critical, we believe that it is critical that those in leadership positions remain steadfast in representing all constituents fairly, without aligning either intentionally or not with any particular political ideology. As student leaders, we will continue advocating for learning environments in which every student feels safe, respected, and empowered because that is what true equity in education requires. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a report for AFT? No reports. SEIU? No reports. Okay, Classified Senate Presidents' Reports. Yes, District Administrative Center.
Good evening once again. I'm Diana Martin, District Administrative Center Classified Senate President. I am pleased to announce that as of tomorrow, DAC Classified Senate will have a fully-seeded Senate Board for the first time since 2023, positioning us to deepen our engagement and participatory governance and sustain long-term Senate operations. We are welcoming Jessica Lemos Taboya. I messed that up, I'm sorry. We are welcoming Jessica as our new ambassador to the colleges, a role that will strengthen communication and partnership between the DAC and the Classified Senates at Moore Park, Oxnard, and Ventura Colleges. With our officer team restored, we are also moving forward on community-building initiatives. We've launched several fundraising activities, including year-round treat grams and a successful Halloween campaign. The proceeds will help subsidize the DAC annual holiday luncheon, tentatively scheduled for December 18th, where we will recognize service milestones and bring everyone together to celebrate the work our colleagues do across the district. Looking ahead, we are also preparing for the return of the DAC Classified Senate Retreat in 2026, which will continue our efforts to build leadership capacity and a stronger sense of belonging among DAC classified professionals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Moore Park College. No reports. Oxnard. Thank you. Oxnard College, anything you want to add?
In my report, I did include Classified Senate has partnered up with the foundation. We are currently raising funds that are going to be used to help any of our students that have been affected by the SNAP freeze. The foundation has agreed to match any donation that we receive, and that is going through Monday, the 17th. So if anybody's interested, the link is on the report attached.
Thank you. Ventura College, anything you wanted to add? Okay, thank you. Academic Senate Presidents, Ventura College.
Since the deadline to submit the written report to the Board of Trustees, Ventura College Academic Senate, oh, Jennifer Garner, Ventura College, the Academic Senate has approved the Student Equity Plan. Like our counterparts at the Classified Senate and Associate Student Government at Ventura College, the Academic Senate took this task very seriously. Through extensive discussion, concerns were raised about plans being made and programs implemented without sufficient input from the stakeholders on campus. After multiple opportunities for faculty to provide feedback on the Student Equity Plan, the Senate Council approved the plan with the expressed expectation that there will be ongoing communication on the implementation and progress of the elements of the Student Equity Plan. And the Academic Senate looks forward to working as a campus to promote success of all Ventura College students. Thank you.
Thank you. Oxnard College.
So I'll just highlight two things from the report which you have. Oxnard College is relaunching our collaboration with UCLA's Chicano Studies Research Center, their program California Freedom Summer. California Freedom Summer is a participatory action research and youth leadership program based through that research center that adapts the spirit of the 1964 Freedom Summer to California, training UC and community college students to do community-centered research, grassroots organizing, and nonpartisan civic outreach. You can read about the core activities in the report. And I'm also happy to share that Oxnard College has been able to reopen our community food pantry in response to the pause on SNAP. It'll be every Friday morning. Volunteers arrive at 8:00 AM. It's probably going to be raining tomorrow, but we're still going to be out there with plastic ponchos. So if you'd like to volunteer or let community know, we're out there every Friday morning, except the day after Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Oxnard College, Moore Park College.
Good evening again. I just have one item to discuss. On September 30th, 2025, the Moore Park College Academic Senate had the second read of the Student Equity and Achievement Plan and passed it. We want to thank the faculty, classified professionals, and the administration who spent so much time getting the data, analyzing the success gaps, and writing the very detailed plan. We also want to thank them for going through the participatory governance process so that we had a chance to review the plan, ask questions, and ultimately approve the plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. College Presidents' Reports, Ventura College.
Thank you all. Just echo comments and accolades and appreciation, much appreciation to our Academic Senate, Classified Senate, and work that Ventura College has endeavored with our Student Equity Plan. We've made some really great strides and looking forward to implementing that plan over the course of these next couple years. Thank you. In addition to my report, there, I've got nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oxnard College.
Good evening, Chancellor. Board Chair Torres, nice to have you back, trustees. Nothing further to add, so thank you.
Thank you. Moore Park College.
Good evening, trustees, chancellor, and guests. The report speaks for itself. I appreciate you taking the time to read it and identify the incredible work that we're doing in support of our students. So additional information, since the report was completed, Moore Park College Men's and Women's Cross Country Team not only qualified for last weekend for the so-called Regionals, but they also had their first play finisher for both men and women. So congrats to our cross-country team. Our football team won on Saturday and qualified for a bowl game, which is a big deal for Moore Park College football team. They were playing in the Patriotic Bowl at Southwestern College on the 22nd of November at 4:00 PM. Good luck to our Raiders. Women's volleyball team has secured at least a share of the WSC title. Congrats to them and best of luck in the postseason. The LA Times covered the Moore Park College Zoo and identified the various incredible programs in support of animal well-being and the success of that program in wildlife education. So two days ago, the LA Times article is really robust. We are very thankful to those folks who have worked on the Student Equity and Achievement Plan for the college, particularly our C committee and the various members of our RE office who supported that work as well. And finally, we had a partnership resource team visit yesterday on our campus. Kudos to math and English faculty who articulated very clearly the work that they're doing at AB 705 and AB 1705, and plus in those equity gaps, but also articulating the importance of partnering with the various stakeholder groups to accomplish such success. Kudos and thank you to our deans, math dean, English dean, as well as our learning resources dean, and the work that they do in that effort. And thank you to Megan, who is the RE dean's assistant, who coordinated that visit and it's been very successful. That's it from Moore Park College, thank you.
Thank you very much. District Office Reports. District Office, anybody feel like they need to report? No? Okay. So we move on to 5.8, Board Committee Reports, Administrative Services Committee.
Yeah, I think I chaired the last meeting, and we did take on several items as reflected in our in our report. We had a very efficient and effective meeting. We did review and discuss the annual Student Equity and Achievement Plans, as well as federal grants programs, and the establishment of program coordinator at Oxnard College. I don't recall that we had anything, any items that necessarily stood out. We're glad to extend, let me make sure that that was that month, a contract to our neighbors in our building here, Premier America Credit Union, which will be on the agenda this evening. And we discussed the student workers, as well as we had a precursor to a discussion related to the 50% law and resources related to that, as board members would like to gain more information and learn about the evolution, or lack thereof, of that policy, if you will.
I agree to everything you said. Just one point I'd like to mention, and I'll be mentioning it when we get to action items, but let's see, it was 6B on the agenda, and that was the amendment to the agreement between the Monarch Hours. I was not in support of that, but did support it going forward to the meeting tonight. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Pass Committee.
Thank you, Chair Torres. This was my turn in our tag-team effort of co-chairing this committee. It was a relatively light agenda, but no less substantive for that. We too had information on the Student Equity and Achievement Plans, which, all three of which are on tonight's agenda, as well as a discussion on syllabi access and syllabus availability for people who want to know more about what makes up a particular course in addition to other information like course descriptions. We also received a legislative update on AB 1400, which would have provided a baccalaureate degree in nursing for community colleges, and this is my descriptor, our governor's short-sighted veto of that legislation. Trustee Pachowski, anything you'd like to add?
I'd just like to add that we did have a very positive discussion with respect to syllabus access and availability, and I would like to see us discuss that as a board. We did, trustee Mantooth and I disagreed over whether or not we should move it forward, but I'd like to see that brought forward as a future agenda item.
Okay, and we can discuss that at towards the end of the meeting to see if we have more consensus to review that.
Chair Torres?
Trustee Lick.
I just want to affirm and agree with trustee Mantooth's comment related to AB 1400 and how vital that is for our communities as well as our community college district.
Okay. So with this, we move on to approval of the Consent Calendar. We have items here, 11.2 from trustee Pachowski, is there any additional ones? Okay, so is there someone who'd like to make a motion to approve that?
The Consent Calendar, with the exception of 11.2.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion made by trustee Pachowski to approve the Consent Calendar with the exception of 11.2, seconded by trustee Mantooth. Student trustee, how do you vote? Thank you. Trustees, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, saying it? Okay, motion passes, thank you. 11.2, trustee Mantooth.
I was the one that pulled that one. Not trustee Mant.
I'm sorry, trustee Pachowski, I was looking at you, but I said trustee Mantooth. Trustee Pachowski.
I've got some questions here. I'm generally confused by what this agenda item is looking to do. I see in the analysis that the position was included in the grant for the Trio Program, but I thought we just, we just received information from the federal government that that grant is no longer being funded going forward. So I don't know why we're being asked to approve a new position if the position's not being funded by a federal grant.
Chancellor.
I think at this time, I would like to turn over to Dr. Gonzalez to answer that more specifically. However, I see an empty chair over there, so I, can we maybe come back to this to get some better information?
I think somebody may be at the podium.
Oh, yes, Mara, thank you. Perfect.
I'd be happy to speak to that. We actually got a new five-year award for our Trio Triple S, so this was not funding from the federal government that has been affected in any way. It's actually a brand-new award. The position was put in at a lower level than what we had previously to maximize the amount of expenditures on behalf of the students and not on the personnel side, so we need to establish a program coordinator position to be able to staff that grant going forward for the next five years.
Any further discussion on this item from trustees? Any further discussion on this item from trustees?
Just one question. With respect to the grant, what were the, what were the conditions that we agreed to with respect to the grant?
So with respect to the trio triple S grant, I don't recall all of them off the top of my head, but we are in compliance with every single federal requirement that was both in the notice of funding as well as our GAN, which is the grant award notice.
So, so then we did agree to follow all federal laws and executive orders as required by the federal government?
We agreed to follow all reference within the grant documentation. That language specifically was not in there.
Do you have a copy of the, of the grant application?
Not with me today, no.
Chair Torres, I would move that we postpone until we can actually see the grant application.
So trustee Pachowski's asking if we can postpone it. Is there any additional comments from the board? Are you ready to move this forward? Do you want to table that?
I guess I have a question.
Well, procedurally, there's a motion on the floor, so I think we need to get a second to that before we have any discussion. Is that not correct?
Okay.
Therefore, I'll second the motion in order to move the conversation forward.
So we have a motion to table this, and then by trustee Pachowski, seconded by trustee Licto. Trust, Chancellor McLennan, you were going to make a comment?
So, one, it's a question to Mara, is there, what's the, if we delay this for, this request for the actual grant materials, is there any, any challenges with operating the program?
Yes, absolutely. We don't have program staff currently assigned, so that grant is currently being overseen by our vice president of student services, Dr. Oscar Kobian. So it's taking him away from other activities to be able to monitor the activities of that grant, the further.
Okay, so there's a little bit of a, a need, more than a little bit of a need. I, I guess the, the question I would have to trustee Pachowski is, the, well, first a comment, the, the staff has made an assurance that we are in compliance with the requirements of the grant application, as well as the grant award. And I, I'm not sure what specifically it is that you'd be looking for to make a decision about a staff position that's in the.
I can answer that for you chancellor. Section 21 of the federal grant application generally indicates, by signing this application, I certify, one, to the statements contained in the list of certifications, and the list of certifications almost certainly always includes a requirement that we adhere to all federal laws and executive orders. And if we're not in compliance with all executive orders, we are at risk of losing the grant money. And so I want to make sure that we're in compliance with those executive orders.
Sure.
I, I do have more to say, but go ahead, please.
Trustee Chancellor.
Can I just, I'm, I'm a little confused on the background. So have we received, have we been approved or granted? Were approved? Received money already for this?
The board action already approved the application and the acceptance of the award for this grant. We have not received funding except for what expenditures have occurred to date, and I don't have that information off the top of my head. So it's a federal grant, so it's on a reimbursement basis. So we draw down money after expenditures have been incurred on regular intervals.
And who accepted the grant or who approved the grant? Was it the federal government?
The federal government approved our application and awarded us, and the board of trustees accepted that award.
Okay, so for me, if the federal government approves what we said we're going to do, I don't want to supersede the federal government and do their job and say, well, I'm concerned that the federal government might be concerned what they already approved. So, maybe I'm missing something, but if the federal government itself said, you're good to go, that's all I need, and if they awarded us this.
The issue here, Josh?
Yeah.
Is that, um, the federal government has been, has been issuing rather comprehensive agreements with colleges and universities across the country. A couple of weeks ago, I read the proposed settlement agreement between the federal government at UC and UCLA with respect to the antisemitism issues that occurred on, on campus in Westwood about, you know, last, last spring. Well, in that, in that proposed settlement agreement, that proposed settlement agreement didn't stop at antisemitism. It included Title IX, it included DEI, it included a whole host of other issues in the proposed settlement. We've got a problem because there's been a, a Title IX investigation requested by three volleyball players at Santa Rosa Junior College, which named every community college in the state of California in their, in their Title IX complaint. They're coming. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when. And so, we need to make sure that our ducks are in a row. And if we turned around and then, and submitted a federal grant application where we agreed to follow all executive orders, then we as a district have that responsibility to make sure we're following all executive orders. Because until, because up until this point, the only thing we've ever heard on, with respect to executive order, executive orders from the chancellor in our meetings here in this room, was that executive orders are not law. But I can tell you, I've seen, I've seen at least three of our grant applications and they've certified that we're following executive orders.
Okay, I, I guess I'm struggling to see the connection between applying for a grant at the federal government, with the federal government, receiving it, and following executive orders.
Because we've certified.
Let me, let me finish. If we have to follow executive orders or rules or regulations, wouldn't that be an operational thing that we entrust our chancellor to make sure that we're doing? I don't know if it's, falls under my purview as a trustee to say, well, let's reject this grant or not take these.
I'm not suggesting we reject it.
So right, as the chair right now, I do want to allow other trustees to be able to speak. We do have a motion on the table, and it is, do we want to table this position? So we do have, it was, it was.
With respect to the motion to table, Chair Torres, I don't see how, we're, we're meeting again on December 1st, a special meeting. I don't see how, you know, waiting, you know, two weeks is going to make a difference. We can, you know, we can, we can turn around and place this on that agenda and, and deal with that then, once staff has been able to provide a copy of, of the certifications that we agreed to under the federal grant.
If I may, chancellor and board?
Of course.
With regards to compliance with executive orders, before the board reviewed this grant and accepted it, I personally did a thorough review. There was reference to several executive orders in which we needed to comply with, and we are in compliance with those. There was no statement in the grant award notice, which is the GAN, requiring compliance with all executive orders. That language was not in the grant award notice. There was reference to several, one that comes to mind was texting and driving, which was an executive order, and another one was something along the lines of coordination with your state government regarding funding, and we are in full compliance with both of those executive orders.
It would have been in, it would have been in section 21 of our federal grant application where we would have certified that.
Okay, so trustees, is there anything trustee Mantooth that you wanted to comment on?
You're inviting me to. When the question is called, I'm going to vote no. I don't see any reason to hold this up.
Okay, so let's take a.
I think, I think the, the potential benefit to our students and the timing and the work that's gone into this by our staff far outweighs the potential chance that some funds may be withdrawn. And we'll deal with that when the chips, and have the chips fall with you, May.
Thank you, student trustee.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you, trustee Mantooth.
I'm just going to vote abstain.
Okay, trustee Licto.
Yeah. I think the point that trustee Pachowski is bringing up is valid from the standpoint of double-checking it. It's not, it's not getting in the way of operations, it's our responsibility. We have fiduciary responsibilities as board members. We need to be sure that we are in compliance with all the regulations. It's not calling anybody's competence into question. I agree that two weeks is not going to set our program back. I would like to see the board vote in favor of tabling this motion until December 1st. And between that time, between today and that time, I'm sure that the information can be provided related to the research that you did, related to the executive orders or statutes that you researched. I'm sure you still have that documentation that can be provided to the chancellor, who could provide it to the board, that, so that we can review, so that we feel 100% confident in moving forward, so that we don't have situations like we're reading about at other colleges. I would be, I would feel, we would be remiss if something did occur and we did jeopardize the grant in total, and we ended up on the front page of the LA Times for not complying with those regulations. So I think from the standpoint of just being careful and making sure that we are in total compliance, I'm in favor of postponing this vote for two weeks.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, whether by trustee Pachowski to table 11.2, seconded by trustee Licto.
Can I, can I ask one more question?
Of course.
Chancellor, I'll, I'll direct it to you, but you might hand it off. Were there some checks and compliance and double-checking, triple-checking through this grant writing process internally, that your staff completed before submitting and making sure that this grant is all buttoned up? Or aligned, I better say it.
Let me answer in the general, and then we of course can ask more specifically to Oxnard College, but just in hearing the explanation that Mara just gave in terms of the, the vetting of the requirements for the grant, and, and especially the diligence in looking at relevant executive orders. So when we say all executive orders, we're really looking at the ones that are relevant to the grant itself, and we, and I have utmost confidence that we've, we've done that. As far as other eyes, I know we have program people, we have the folks that are helping write the grant, we have the, the fiscal oversight and the review of the grant application, but if I'm probably missing some steps along the way, Mara, if you want to help with that.
Absolutely. I think one of the most pertinent aspects of the current grant process, this grant was applied for prior to the current administration and the recent climate that we're currently in, and that was why staff took an extra review before we brought it back to the board for acceptance. So tonight's item is a little bit different because it's focusing on the creation of a personnel to execute the grant activities. The grant activities were awarded and acceptable to the current administration. So, there was nothing in what our proposed activities were or the student populations in which we'd be serving with this grant that triggered any concern under the current federal administration, and therefore we were awarded. In the areas where there's been concerns with grants, it has been specifically tied to the nature of the grants and the intended purpose, and there being revisionary concerns after those grants were awarded, where funding has been lost in a number of cases. So hopefully that clarifies a little bit in terms of the vetting that happened, the start of the process to where we are now, and that we did take an intentional review at a staff level before bringing that grant back for acceptance to the board to make sure that we were looking at the concerns that trustee Pachowski is bringing forth.
Thank you very much, Mara.
Chair Torres.
Trustee Licto.
Yeah, I too am confident, about 99% confident, that we have followed all the procedures, that we comply with all the statutes, that we're not going to be in violation of any laws, procedures, or executive orders. However, I'm just urging the board to, let's take two weeks and let's be 100% sure that all of our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted, so that we, as a board unified, can move this forward and, you know, do so confidently.
We, we've seen this, we've seen this.
Trustee Pachowski.
Months, months and months in a row where we're not getting the documents that we need to make the decisions properly. Let's, let's take two weeks and, and see the documents.
Excuse, may I, please? I, I have to address that. I, I, that's a pretty big statement, trustee Pachowski. Which documents are you referring to in this particular case?
Well, we've seen, we've seen situations where bids were not provided to us.
I'm talking about this particular motion or this action that we're talking about.
I'm talking, I'm talking about the grant app, the, the federal grant application and the list of certifications required by section 21.
But this isn't, this isn't a motion about the grant application, it's a motion about the position to staff the grant.
I understand, but I want to see the, I want to see the, I want to see the documents.
But that's not, that's not relevant to this question. It has become relevant because it's come up in terms of this, this inquiry that is happening right now, but in terms of the preparation for the board documents that came to the board, they were, they were provided in full for the item on the agenda.
So trustees, at this moment, we've had an opportunity to really discuss and to be able to really deliberate, and we've had everybody's voice be heard. We're looking into 11.2, the establishment of a program coordinator, so what we're looking, what's in front of us is a position. So we do have an action or a motion made to table this until December 1st, seconded, which is motion by trustee Pachowski, seconded by trustee Licto. Michelle, can you do roll call vote, please?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No. So now we move back, thank you. Motion fails, 11.2, so is there a motion for the establishment of a program coordinator?
That motion, trustee Chair Torres?
Okay. Okay, trustee made by, motion made by trustee Mantooth, seconded by trustee Chancellor. Student trustee, how do you?
I have a comment.
Yes.
And my comment is, maybe it'd be better said after we vote, vote on this, but I, I just hope this discussion and this idea of being either 99% and 100% sure about things that we depend on our staff to do that, that it doesn't discourage future grant writing opportunities. They're critically important for our students and the employees that work in this district to provide for our students. So moving forward, I, I just hope that it's not deflating and it's not like, well, why should I bother? So, I, I, I want to applaud the work that it was to pivot and make sure that this program continues to move forward at Oxnard College in particular. So with that, ready to vote.
Okay, student trustee, how do you vote?
I'm just going to abstain my vote.
You're going to abstain as well? Okay. Michelle, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Okay, we move on to 12.1, board policies, action to approve BP 7270 student workers. Chancellor McLennan?
Hossam, I know you're sitting in for Dr. Herrera tonight. Do you have anything to say about this one? Oh, you, I'm sorry. I knew it was somebody over there. It was a little deer in the headlights right there, sorry about that.
Thank you chancellor. This one has gone through our governance process, then went to ASC, so this one is to increase some salary amounts for our student worker classification based on the increase to the minimum wage, and then as a result of that, to two other classifications that were impacted by that increase. So, is, is here for your review and action.
Trustee Mant.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Board Policy 7270 in its amended form.
Okay. Motion made by trustee Mantooth, is there a second?
Second.
That was about the same time. Josh, okay, trustee Chancellor. Okay, so we have a motion made by trustee Mantooth, seconded by trustee Chancellor. Student trustee, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustees, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, saying nay? Okay, motion passes, thank you. To 13.1.
Chair Torres, I move that we approve item 13.1.
Second.
Do you want to leave?
Yeah, I'll read it.
This is related to a resolution for the absence of our board chair.
This is, oh, you got it?
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Do we need to read the entire resolution? I don't think so either. So, we're glad to have Chair Torres back, and in her absence, the board is required to pass a resolution authorizing payment in her absence. And I believe we have a motion.
And I believe we have a motion and a second, and so with your permission, I'll call for a vote. Student trustee, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustees, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. We move to 14.01. Chancellor McLennan.
I apologize, I am, just on my computer version of this, and I'm trying to. I'm sorry, 14.1? Yes. This is the amendment to the agreement between the Monarch Towers. And I think this went through the ASC committee, and as trustee Chancellor mentioned, there was some disagreement, but it's here for the board. And Eileen, I don't know if you have something you want to add to this?
Chancellor and trustees, Eileen Merez, Dr. Mitchell is online, but I can add to this item. So this is an existing lease, and we're asking to amend it and extend it till 2027. When this was presented last at board, there was questions if FCC regulations were in place, and they are in place. We did thorough research of that. And also, we also did a deep dive and other research regarding other community college districts nearby continuing to take and extend site leases on their campus for towers. And we did want to emphasize that it's 5G technology. I know that was one of the questions. It is a revenue to the campus, and there is a rent escalation to it as well. So we are hoping to go ahead and approve this for the district. And there is a termination clause as well. That was a question that previously came up.
Chair Torres.
Thank you for mentioning the termination clause. That's 30 days before the end of each lease period.
Correct.
And I assume that staff tracks that assiduously.
Correct.
And do those renewals need to come back before this body?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustees.
Approval.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so move by trustee Mantu, seconded by trustee Pachowski. Discussion? Nope. Okay, trustee Chancellor.
Yeah, again, I voiced some concerns, I don't know, three, three-ish months ago when we had this. And actually, no, it was before that, because I was reminded of where this. I just want to confirm, first of all, is the location of this tower going to be exactly where it is now? Same location?
Football field.
Yeah, that's where the current fake palm tree is. Yeah, I was reminded of this at our graduation at Ventura College, and everyone was asked to face the flag, Pledge of Allegiance, National Anthem, and right there at the flag, what do you see? The cell phone tower. And I really feel for the students that are going to be moving into our student housing and are going to have to live next to this. So I don't think something like this belongs on our campus, particularly not at this location. I know we have another tower near the police station, but this is a hard no for me. So just wanted to voice that out.
Okay. Any further discussion comments? Okay, so we have motion made by trustee Mantu, seconded by trustee Pachowski. See, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustees, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. 14.2, Ventura College Housing State Lease Revenue Bond Project Delivery and Construction Agreement.
So you have the board, the narrative explaining sort of the mechanics of this. This is a required action to actually, it's required by the State Public Works Board to move forward with issuing the bonds for the project. But we have folks who can talk in more detail about that, if there are any questions for the board.
Chair Torres.
Trustee Licto.
This item was discussed at the ASC meeting, and we unanimously approved to move the item forward, and therefore I'd make a motion that we approve item 14.2 as submitted.
Okay, motion made by trustee Licto, seconded by trustee Mantu. Student trustee, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustees, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any approves, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Then we move to 14.3.
Chair Torres.
Trustee Licto.
Similarly, 14.3 was discussed at the ASC committee meeting. I referenced it earlier today. It's related to Premier America Credit Union and their continued occupancy of a couple of suites within this building. And therefore, I would take this opportunity to move that we approve this item.
Okay. Motion made by trustee Licto, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Pachowski. Any discussion? Okay, student trustee, how do you vote? It's okay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Trustees, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Trustees, at any time, does anybody need a break?
Yes.
Yes, okay, okay. I wanted to check in. Okay, so we will take five minutes. Okay, we will be back in five minutes. Okay, we are reconvening. We took an extended nice break, but we needed it. And so now trustees, 15.1, we have here a resolution for classified unrepresented salary benefits. Chancellor McLennan.
Have we seen this?
This went through the ASC. It's a fairly routine item.
Yeah, in that.
Explanation.
Yeah, in that light, I'll make a motion to approve 15.1 as submitted.
Okay, I have a motion made by trustee Licto, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by trustee Chancellor. Any discussion? Okay, student trustee, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustees, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. We have now 16.1. We have a couple of our colleges' equity reports that were submitted, and we have them here each one for an action item.
I'll move to approve in order to have some discussion.
Okay, so a motion made, is it for all of, all three of them, 16.1?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, so we have approval, motion made to approve all of our equity, our student equity reports from our three colleges, motion made by trustee Licto, seconded by trustee Mantu. Okay, discussion.
Yeah, I guess I have a general question. It's obvious and evident, based on the reports that we heard today, that it's a comprehensive approach to these equity reports. A lot of involvement and a lot of participation. Is, are these, are these compliance documents? Are these documents that are exclusively our district? Do these go to the state chancellor's office? I guess those are my questions related to these items. For anyone out there. That's, yes to all that?
Yes.
Okay, so these are compliance items. Okay, we get a template, we respond to questions and responses. We collaborate across the campuses. Students had input, faculty had input, classified staff had input. Okay, that was my question.
And I just had an instant compliance with the funding that comes with the colleges to do this work.
Okay, any other further comments? Okay, I just want to thank the colleges for the work that went into the equity reports. I know that there's a lot of specific metrics, a lot of coming together with everyone to try to determine what is it that you're going to be looking at, getting everyone's input, and really looking into what does it mean, what does equity mean? And try to define it within instruction within student support services. So I took an opportunity to really look at your reports. And so thank you very much for all of the hard work that really went into it to support our students, because this is really where it is when we talk about MIIC and student support services as well. So I really like that there's also student support mentoring programs, wellbeing. It was nice to be able to see that along with the instructional component. I was able to see the collaborative effort from each one of the different classified academic administration and students, most importantly. So thank you very much for that. So it seems like we have a motion made by, oh, trustee Chancellor.
Just to clarify, are, there's 16.1, which is the California Community College Chancellor's Office, SEA Program Student Equity Reports. Are we approving all three reports in this motion?
The, the motion includes item 16.1, 16.1.2, and 16.1.3.
Okay, and I, I know this went through our committee, but did the individual reports go through our committee? I know there was an overview item, but I don't believe the actual individual reports went through. And I, and the reason why, you know, I also, as we all did, kind of dove into these. And it was great to see on page 21, by no means do I expect anybody to, you know, to find this on Oxnard College, but there, there was a paragraph, and it said, and it had to do from the section of dual enrollment, but also enrollment. And I know dual enrollment is a huge priority and goal for our three colleges in our district. And one of the paragraphs said, "To sustain success, Oxnard College embeds counselors at partner, partner high schools weekly, providing direct guidance on academic planning, college readiness, and transfer. In addition, our dual enrollment team delivers regular, regular matriculation workshops, both in person and online, to ensure students receive consistent support through application, registration, and onboarding. These wraparound services have been critical in scaling dual enrollment while closely, while closely equity gaps, by closing equity gaps." So I know we have three independent colleges, and they have, there's three different plans here. But one of the areas, we have one college, and I've mentioned this almost regularly at every board meeting, that one college made a decision to position or assign counselors at our partner high schools. The other two colleges, I didn't see that in their equity plans. And I just wanted to confirm that that concept or idea is not in those plans, and therefore most likely won't be occurring. So I guess that's a question for Moore Park and Ventura College. I couldn't find it in the plan, and to me, it seemed like an appropriate place to list that, if in fact we're planning on doing that.
So for Moore Park College, we're taking an alternative approach. Yes, we do have counselors who visit our high schools in our service area. They're not located at that once a week. There's arrangements that they make so that they can be there when a student needs it. There is a relationship between our campus and those campuses where the students come onto our campus, and there's an opportunity for them to receive those services. There is also online opportunities. So it's a different approach that we're taking with the same end goal in mind.
Likewise with Ventura College, taking a little bit of a different approach, and me coming in with some succession management and picking this up, that is the plan, is to get high school counselors onto, I'm sorry, college counselors, our faculty counselors onto high school campuses to, to offer service and support along with our outreach teams. The other piece that may not be necessarily reflected in the student equity plan, but are engaged with our ed master plan, is our ongoing building of relationship with the adult schools and finding ways that we can make stronger connections and getting students who are interested in upskilling and reskilling as part of the adult school community connected to Ventura College.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I, I guess I have a question, and, and my question is, I don't know how to fulfill my role as a trustee right here. Because I've gotten feedback from, I guess, constituents, students, employees, and the community that the success of counselors being placed at our partner schools in Oxnard, from Oxnard College, is widely appreciated, exceptionally successful. And when other districts and other partner schools throughout the county hear about it, they go, that sounds amazing. How do we do that? And I've brought that up as carefully as I can to, you know, not step out of my lanes and direct any work. But I don't see it in the equity plan, and I was hoping that this would be an idea at least sort of piloted, approached, something. So I'm stuck, because I don't want to vote down two equity plans here, but it doesn't seem equitable to me that high schools in Oxnard receive a benefit that high schools throughout the county don't receive. And I know there are wraparound services, and there is visits and appointments made, but it's a whole lot different than a student meeting one-to-one at their high school, have an opportunity to be addressed as a future college student, and to really have that one-on-one conversation, and to leave the room going, I'm a Moore Park College student now. I'm going to, next year, I'm going. I've signed up. I've done it. So it's an advantage that some students have, and I'm struggling with the equity piece. So I don't know who to address the question to. I don't want to just throw everything out in these equity plans, because at the end of the day, that's all I have, is my vote. Yeah, trustee Chancellor voted no on two colleges' equity plans, because we don't know why. So I'm struggling with this. I, I did, I know before President Larino Habib left, we had some conversations about this, and she said they were looking at returning these services in the future. I don't know where that's left off, but I'm struggling. So I just wanted to share that with my colleagues, but I don't really know what to do with this dilemma that I'm having.
Thank you, trustee Chancellor, trustee Mantu.
Just a comment that I hope would be helpful, because I definitely see the value in having these counselors on high school campuses. And I obviously have a clear recollection of your strong interest in this. However, sometimes if you're climbing a mountain, there's more than one trail to the top. And each of our three colleges has a little bit different trail that they're, that they're walking. I think over time, perhaps, I wouldn't hold up the approval of these plans, knowing how strongly we do feel about the benefit of some way of integrating face-to-face on high school campuses. But I think, and I see us migrating more toward that goal universally, but the strategies that are currently being employed, I think, are still very effective.
Okay, any other comments? Okay. So we do have a motion on the table, motion made by trustee Licto and seconded by trustee Mantu to approve the student equity reports from our three colleges, which is 16.1 to 16.1.1.3. Student trustee, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustees, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Chair Torres.
Trustee Licto.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 16.2, Moore Park College curriculum, and 16.3, Oxnard College curriculum.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to pass 16.2 and 16.3 made by trustee Licto, seconded by trustee Pachowski. Comments? Okay, student trustee, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Okay, trustees, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay.
I did have one comment, if I could.
Of course.
And I know this is, I'm sure it's part of the planning and part of the discussion. It would be great if we could, in, in future, I want to make sure that the programs we're providing, that we have some workforce connection to those programs and new curriculums. And I know that exists, and I wouldn't be able to find that unless I dug in there a little deeper. It would be, it'd be great to either hear that, like maybe during consultation reports or reports from either the presidents or the academic senators, that these new programs are being built with, with that in mind, with the fact that we're preparing students for future jobs.
Thank you, trustee Licto. 17.1, Chancellor's report.
I'll start by just adding my welcome to you, trustee Torres, for returning to the dais. It's good to have you back.
Thank you.
I just like to mention that one of our priorities, and one of my priorities the last three years anyway, and certainly continuing into this year, is really around the, the area of community engagement and relationship building with external agencies. And that work continues. There's any number of events that we're part of, boards that we're populating, chambers, rotaries, and all of that. And I want to commend everybody on the executive staff and at the colleges for taking that to heart. It's really having an impact on the way we're regarded in the. It's really having an impact on the way we're regarded in the community. And uh, in that spirit, I want to welcome Dr. Josefa Baca, who's sitting in uh, in front and center uh, for Dr. Herrera uh, today, Associate Vice Chancellor uh, with Cynthia extending those formal relationships and the partnerships we have in the areas of workforce development. Uh, to your point, trustee Licto and dual enrollment in particular, and uh, bringing a lot of expertise in, in those areas. Some of the seemingly intractable challenges that we have or have had historically in some of these areas are um, you know, some of the, some of the barriers are being swept clear, but it's mostly about the relationship building and the engagement and uh, and the collaboration that's coming with that. So I just wanted to formally welcome Josefa into this new role in helping with that work. Another one of our priorities has been around district-wide leadership. Uh, uh, from one of the very first conversations I have with the Board of Trustees, that's been a priority for us, for me, personally looking at, at leadership at all levels throughout the district. As you recall, we brought in a, a new position to the district office, uh, Wendy Saunders. I don't know if Wendy's here, still I saw her earlier. Uh, the uh, and as our uh, Director of Training and Organizational Development. I think I got that right. How about that? That's pretty good. And um, last month, uh, Wendy, along with others, uh, launched uh, the Leadership Collaborative. We have twenty-two uh, employees throughout the district who are participating in a seven-month-long cohort deep dive uh, into a very academic uh, leadership. Um, uh, full-day uh, events uh, once a month. Uh, the, the first event was a two-day event and uh, been very well received by the participants. And I think it's gonna, it, it, you know, I shared with them at the, at the opening that nobody will ever be able to say they were part of the first cohort of this program, but I want to commend Wendy Saunders and the team that helped build this program of doing a really exceptional job of setting up a curriculum that's going to change the leadership culture in this district. In January, the next level of this work will be uh, uh, a series, there are three scheduled, there'll be more to follow uh, that, that drill into the dean level, specific dean and director level uh, leadership um, development. And may a little more pragmatic focused around specific issues, issues uh, to those roles. Uh, but I just wanted to give the board just a brief uh, update on that. Uh, continues to be one of my goals with the board, of course, and there's much progress being made on that. Um, I think that, that, I'll stop there. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, Chair Torres had to step out to make a phone call. And so uh, trustees, are there any questions for the chancellor related to his report? Any comments? Okay, with that, we'll go to our student trustee report.
Thank you very much. Um, I just want to keep it brief regarding my uh, student trustee report. Uh, with that being said, uh, last month was the first ever um, student trustee caucus meeting where I led the meeting. It was actually an amazing meeting where we got, I got to speak to other student trustees about their concerns and I kind of went over the agenda and thanks to the help of my two board members, who's the vice chair, who is Matthew Cadell and Sophia Manavi, uh, who's the secretary. I could not done without them and we kind of really just uh, led, uh, led, uh, led the student trustees and see their concerns because uh, we want to make sure that even, I'm making, I want to make sure that even the student trustees across California uh, concerns are being appreciated and known, so then I can speak about, up about it. And um, I think uh, that'd be it for uh, now uh, for my report and I plan on doing more the next month, truly. And really uh, taking in more of the student trustee uh, role and perspective and make sure that everyone's um, concerns and um, things that they want are, are being well-known and pushed forward as the elected official that I am. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. With this, we move on to our individual trustee reports. And um, we will start with trustee chancellor.
Together uh, future items and my student, or not student, uh, individual trustee report. And uh, the first one is, I hope for our December meeting, um, we can get an agenda item for uh, to put an RFQ or something for the services that we use. Um, you know, we, we put a lot of time into prepping for this meeting. I think for this meeting, I put more time waiting for Boardable to get to the right page than to actually looking at the documentation. So um, there, there were some choice words uh, spoken in front of my laptop this, this week. So I'm going to redirect those choice words into a uh, agenda item to, to look at some other services or something that we can do as we work, because I know we approved a one-year contract and I think we're already halfway through that. Um, I'd also like to add to our December meeting, our special meeting, uh, a closed session item on negotiations. Um, and a couple of other items that I'll be emailing uh, board chair on. Um, I definitely heard the comments on uh, collegeculture@vc and that's, that'd probably be one of the items that I'll be looking at for closed session to discuss a plan moving forward. Um, I'm wondering if there's going to be uh, in the president's report for Ventura College, there was a big section, thank you for that, on the student housing. And I wonder as, as we also approved an item to hopefully move that along, we'll be having a groundbreaking ceremony. I hope we will. Think that's important. Um, and the last thing I have, oh, yesterday morning, uh, it's one of my favorite days of the year and that is the uh, ceramic sale, student ceramic sale at Ventura College. So it opened up at nine AM and I was there at eight forty-five for work and um, it, it was, it did not disappoint. So I, uh, it was, took all self-control not to go back again today and um, support even more, but uh, it was great. So it, it, I know that's just one small snapshot of the outcome of the small portion of the work that we do and, and that is the things. Sometimes it's ideas, sometimes it's music, but sometimes it's actual tangible artwork that students produce. So uh, it, it was amazing to see. So thank you for that. And I do want to mention in one of those consent items of employment personnel, um, one of my professors, uh, Dr. Kanjian, way back from nineteen ninety-seven at Ventura College, I noticed that he uh, is retiring. So um, he's also my son's professor now, which is kind of interesting and, and neat. But um, full circle and all the other retirees, congratulations. And thank you for all the reports tonight and the comments. Please know that they were heard. Um, and yeah, we got some work to do. So thanks.
Thank you, trustee Mantis.
Uh, I actually have two or three things. Um, uh, first of all, uh, my wallet also is a little bit lighter because I attended the ceramic sale as well and uh, and, and, and they, they saw me coming. But uh, there's a number of family members that are going to enjoy stoneware as their uh, holiday gifts. Um, I also recently was able to, with our chancellor, attend the um, Association of Community College Trustees National Leadership Congress. And it was my privilege to represent the board in voting for our local uh, uh, boards uh, for our particular area. There was also a very big focus, not surprisingly, on artificial intelligence as well as workforce development. Um, and uh, Monday this week, I was able to attend the kickoff event that's uh, put on by the Ventura County Civic Alliance for their State of the Region. And this is a report that comes out every other year and really is an excellent quick reference guide in so many domains to what's going on here in our backyard and what's, that has meaning for us, uh, obviously including education. And uh, I had a s- a short opportunity to uh, sing the praises of uh, the community colleges of Ventura County. So that was uh, very rewarding. Uh, and I hope it was for the audience as well. Um, and Saturday, I'm looking forward to being a judge at the Oxnard College Geo Challenge. Uh, and I always take those questions uh, that the students are posed in geography to my family dinner on Thanksgiving and see how many they can get right. That's it for me.
Thank you, trustee Mantis. Trustee Pachaski.
Yes, um, I had the pleasure of attending the Ventura College Foundation event um, that was out uh, in Ventura uh, last month. Um, on the next day, I was at the Simi Valley Chamber Legislative Affairs Zoom call. Uh, later that day, I had the pleasure of attending the grand opening of the Moore Park College Makerspace. Um, got to see all the fun stuff that they're doing in there. Um, and then I too was at the, with the trustee Mantis, I was at the State of the Region uh, presentation on Monday. I wanted to actually, uh, I, I did grab a copy for each of the board members that wa- that wasn't in attendance. But I do want to call your attention to a couple of items on page, pages fifty-two to fifty-five. Uh, these are standardized test scores in both English and math um, for schools, for K through twelve schools across the county. But I want to point out that the high school at Moore Park College and the Oxnard Middle College High School are both, are both at the top of the, top of the schools in the county for the work that they're doing. I know we spent, I know we spent some time at a, at our special meeting in, in uh, Santa Paula back in August. Um, I know there was, there was at least one individual there who was sug- who was suggesting that we may want to look at doing something similar with Ventura College in the Santa Paula River Valley or Santa Clara River Valley, I should say. Um, based on the number, on the, on this, on the test scores, I'm, the data I'm seeing here, I think uh, I think we need to explore doing something with that. Um, just because, just because, like I said, Oxnard College Middle, uh, Oxnard Middle College High School and the high school at Moore Park College are, are, you know, two of the best schools in the county. And uh, and we, we really need to be doing something to help, help uh, the students in, in the Santa Clara River Valley. So I just wanted to point those out.
Thank you, trustee Pachaski. Trustee, oh, there's, of course.
Um, a couple of items I wanted that, that need to be looked at. Um, it's been a few months. We have not received any kind of an update with respect to the flag policy that we uh, decided we were gonna, gonna pursue. I'd like to get an update on that. Um, I'd also like, like to see us get an update on uh, on the old gender restrooms across all three campuses. And I do want to see, I do want us to look at the, at the possibility of making syllabi, syllabi available to all students before the first day of class.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Licto.
Thank you, Chair Torres. And first of all, happy birthday to Lisa Putnam and belated happy birthdays to uh, both trustee Pachaski and to our board chair, welcome back.
Thank you.
Trustee Torres. Uh, Boardable, Mr. Chancellor, I have found, um, I got a great tip from Lisa Putnam, I believe it was, or Dr. Watkins. Uh, click right and open in a new tab each of those items. You can open up as many of those as you want and you don't have to wait for that to load and then go backwards. It really will save you a lot of time. Uh, you know, there's a lot of frustrations with Boardable. I'm adapting. So if this is the tool we have, I'll go with it as long as it's that tool. And when we get a new one, I guarantee it'll be better, but we'll still have that frustration. Uh, I want to thank the individuals from Ventura County or from Ventura College, rather, who came out and spoke today related to the uh, related to their campus climate and concerns they have in that realm. Uh, it was evident to me that their goals are student-driven, not self-serving, and that is absolutely appreciated. And I am sure that there'll be further discussion at the board level uh, related to any of those concerns. I felt that uh, the discussion regarding eleven point two, item eleven point two, uh, which was the new position or the position at Oxnard College uh, supporting uh, the grant, I thought was a great illustration of how our system should work. A trustee uh, brought up a concern and an issue. Uh, it was discussed quite vigorously. I don't think that we got all of the information that we would have required, though we did appreciate the input that we received from uh, staff. Uh, so thank you for that. And ultimately, we voted unanimously to approve the position because it benefits our students. And so I guess my point is that asking questions is not being disagreeable. It is doing our duty, especially when dollars are involved, especially when dollars that could potentially, potentially be threatened if we're not in compliance uh, with all the areas that we're being asked to comply with. Uh, so I support those programs and again, I assert that that's our responsibility uh, to um, you know, meet our high expectations and more importantly, comply with all the statutes. And then I do, I would like to make a statement in response to uh, the concerns brought up today related to uh, closing the meeting last month in honor and memory of Charlie Kirk. Uh, that was my decision as the sitting board chair. There was no uh, there's, there was no policy in place, uh, which I think at this point would probably be uh, important for us to take on. But I want to be really clear that acknowledging Charlie Kirk was not a political statement. It was a recognition of civic, civic engagement and the enduring principle that democracy thrives on the free exchange of ideas and not the suppression of those ideas. Our district's commitment to nonpartisan civic participation means we honor the value of dialogue, even when perspectives differ. I believe in diversity and more so above all kinds of diversity. I believe in diversity of thought first and foremost. Our democracy was built on that. Our republic was built on that and it, it's required to sustain that republic. Respect for differing viewpoints is not optional in a public institution. It is our duty. I want to remind everyone that Charlie Kirk was first and foremost a husband, a father, a son, a friend to many, and an individual that promoted free speech and debate. Whether you agreed with all of his points of view or not, that was his mission in life. And for that, he was assassinated. Honoring his work and his impact was, and in my opinion, continues to be appropriate.
Thank you, trustee Licto. I am very thankful to God to be here with you this evening. Um, and so I wanted to take this opportunity also to thank you, trustee Licto, for being able to be acting chair for the last two months um, with everything that came to our district. I am, in the comments, definitely there is something we're going to be looking, which is the resolutions. How do they come to the board? How do we agree? Adjourning as well, having a policy in place. Um, and that's just to make sure that we have a process, um, a transparent process and where everybody's involved. And I think I heard from our students also saying that that's a process that they wanted to be very much involved with. And so um, as we move forward as the board, um, we had already discussed, um, trustee Licto and I during agenda setting meeting that this is something that we wanted to put in place. Both him and I are part of the ad hoc committee that reviews the board policies that are referenced, chapter two particularly to the board. So um, when I came back towards the end of, I want to say end of October, I started coming to the district to do the agenda setting and just get back into getting ready for this meeting. That was one of the things that we did um, agree that we needed to have those policies in place to make sure we know resolutions that are going to be introduced have been gone through a process as well as a journey. So um, with that, I am so looking forward for the beautiful work that we do. We are a college that is committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We are committed to social justice. We have our student equity plans. We have our strategic goals. That's who we are. So it's pretty much our vision and what we do and so we stand very firm in doing that work. And so the beautiful thing about us as trustees, as well as our college, is that diversity of opinions. And that's what makes us stronger and makes us being able to really be there for our students and when we come together as an entire team. So I am extremely excited and happy to be back to continue working with an amazing team of board of trustees. And I missed you greatly. I was excited to come back. I really was. And um, I'm happy to be here. Um, I wish everyone an amazing Thanksgiving with your families and I truly mean that from the bottom of my heart. Give hugs, give kisses, say I love you. Um, the best way that you show that love because I will tell you from my experience, one day you're perfectly fine and then out of nowhere, nowhere, something happens and you don't see it coming. And so that's why for me, I'm very Thanksgiving, I'm full of gratefulness and thankfulness to God, to my family, to my friends. Thank you for all of the prayers, all of the support that I received. It makes a world of a difference when you're recovering and so that's who we are. We are the Ventura County Community College District. We stand for our community. We stand together. And um, everything will pass and as long as we stay together, committed to our vision, um, we will overcome. We always do. So with that, we are going now to our future agenda items, nineteen point one. There's a request for future items. I think I received some of those items from our trustees in their reports, but I am going to allow if there's any request for future items in addition to the ones that I did take note of.
Do you want to read the ones you took note of so we don't do the paperwork?
Okay, so from trustee chancellor, trustee- trustee chancellor would like enclosed session items for our December first meeting and update on negotiations. He's also interested in looking at FRQs regarding softwares because of the difficulties with Boardable. An update on the Ventura College housing and also for trustees to look into the Ventura College culture based on the comments that we have received from our speakers that have taken the time to come and express their concerns with, to the board, which is also a comment that I believe I heard from you as well, that you also thanked everyone for coming and sharing their comments. And from trustee Mantooth, you wanted to get an update in terms of the flag policy, all gender.
That was Pachowski.
Pachowski, I keep on calling, sorry trustee Mantooth, trustee Pachowski. I, second time it happens. So trustee Pachowski wanted an update in flag policy, also on all-gender restroom and also a discussion of syllables available before the beginning of classes. Okay.
Can I add that at ASE will take on a discussion related to the fifty percent law, which eventually I think will end up with some kind of discussion here at the board level. So I look forward to that. And then there was one additional item that at this late hour, oh my gosh, it's not even eight o'clock yet. I can't remember what it is, but I will, I will let you know.
Okay, okay, so fifty percent law. Okay. So before we do adjourn, we did have a comment, a public comment, and it's from Ariana Villalobos Castillo.
Thank you. Good evening, board of trustees, student trustee Ayash, chancellor McLennan Engas. My name is Ariana Villalobos Castillo and I am a VCCD student who has always taken great pride in being a product of this district. Before October thirteenth, I felt confident that this board reflected the communities and students it serves. However, I want to express that I left the October fourteenth board of trustees meeting embarrassed, ashamed, and deeply disappointed. The decision to adjourn in honor of an individual who has openly spoken ill of Hispanic communities and LGBTQI communities and also disregarded college, that it was unnecessary, was not only hurtful, it was confusing and disheartening. As someone who belongs to both of these communities, it was painful to watch the board choose to honor someone whose values did not align with the students you represent, nor with the inclusive and equitable mission that our colleges strive to uphold. All three sister colleges are Hispanic-serving institutions and many of us identify as LGBTQIA+. To see the board uplift someone who has publicly demeaned these identities sends the message that our dignity is optional and that is unacceptable. What made this even more concerning is that the board had an opportunity to adjourn in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month, coming to an end, a moment that would have honored the largest demographic you serve and affirmed the cultural identity of thousands of students and families across this district. Instead, the choice was, the choice made felt misaligned with our reality, our values, and our lived experiences. I'm asking that the board to take responsibility in ensuring that your actions reflect the diverse student body. That depends on you. Your choices matter. They communicate what and who you value. And on October fourteenth, that message received by many students was not one of inclusion or respect. I truly believe this district can do better. I hope the board will reflect on how decisions impact the communities it is meant to serve and take initial steps towards demonstrating genuine servingness, respect, and alignment with the values of your students. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you, Ariana. So October, I was Hispanic Heritage Month and it always has been. There's resolutions that are passed through our district and that was not passed last month. We didn't have a resolution for Hispanic Heritage Month.
It was there?
It was not there. But we didn't have a resolution. We did not have a resolution. So we don't have a resolution, but what I would like to do, because we do have our students and we are a Hispanic-serving institution, and so out of recognition, out of respect, out of who we are as a community, with the consensus of the board. We don't have, it was an agenda, but we can decide as a board if we'd like to be able to adjourn. It's typically, it's every October. I remember every October, it always comes to us as a board, the resolution. So as a board, we can decide together if we would like to adjourn, and then we can bring back a resolution. But on acknowledging and during this time, our students of Hispanic Heritage Month. Okay. Okay, so with the board agreeing, so we're going to adjourn our meeting in recognizing the work and the efforts of our students of our Hispanic-serving institutions, celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, that we have it every single day, every single time. Everything that they've been experiencing, everything that they've been going through during these times. And the Ventura County Community College District recognizes them, stands by them, and we are here to support them in all of their endeavors. So with that, we adjourn, acknowledging Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you, everybody. We adjourned at seven forty-seven.